Good evening, welcome to my school or media, it's Monday, March 30th, 2020, six o'clock. When Susan probably lives the board in the 87 building. Interesting meeting, the first time we've used uh um remote uh board this paper, we had this policy since 2013, but this is the first time it's really been applicable. So we'll kind of model through here. Um like call the leader and after the talent to call roll first.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Deggler?
Here.
Ms. Gotcha?
Here.
We do have a quorum, and we also have a quorum of the people physically present, which is required by the policy, which having at least four people. Um so we will continue. This meeting has been known as first base statues. Um do we have any community participation, we have one person here, you just hear the service say thank you. So we'll dismiss reading that and we'll go to our school board meeting minutes. Um our regular meeting minutes from March 9th are attached. I passed out the closed session with those of you who are here. Um Paul and Barb, unfortunately, you probably don't have those.
No, we do not.
So you may want to abstain, luckily, we do have enough people to pass it without.
Okay.
Okay.
Um no, well, make a motion, please go ahead. Um I'll move to approve the minutes for the March 9th, 2020 regular and closed session school board meeting minutes as presented.
I think we'll have to break that up into uh the regular and then the closed separately.
Yeah, we probably should, since they can't really vote on the on the closed different than normal.
Well, it's never.
Sure, then we have a second. Alright, so it's a move to second to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2020 regular session school board meeting as presented. Uh roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Deggler?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um do you have a motion to approve the closed session meeting? I also do.
That's right.
It's been moved to second to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2020 closed session school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Abstain.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Um Ms. Deggler?
Abstain.
Oh, Ms. Gotcha?
Abstain?
Mrs. Fisher?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Alright, general other fund bills and stuff.
Yeah, I was thinking general other fund bills, coverage checks number 139423 through 139616, wire transfers 669 through 672. ACH check numbers 249 through 273, debt service wire transfers of 688 through 691. And six voided checks, number 138357, 139233, 139239, 139243, 139243, 343, and 139350, the combined amount of 4,556,226 dollars and 56 cents. This is the uh board meeting that typically we prepare to pay our semi-annual debt service, so that's a large portion of the bills in the packet. And then there was a memo um including several more information on several of the bills in your packet, and then a copy of the treasures report through the month of February. All of the bill listing.
Questions for the members?
I have several. Um for the city of Elkhorn, the um funds that we paid for the coal field development and field maintenance. It mentioned um that this was the fourth payment over a 10-year period, is that an annual payment?
It is.
Okay.
So they usually bill us in April each year.
Okay.
That was an agreement that was reached back in 2014, so it was a 10-year kind of payment schedule. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to find out how often we make that payment.
Yeah.
Um and then uh the vision consulting services, um is this for visually impaired students?
Yes, I think there are about six students, five or six that are servicing.
Okay, and and what does this consultation, what I mean, what does it do, what is it for?
Um they they come and evaluate the students, work with them to make sure that we have the right adaptive equipment or that we're meeting their IEP needs, so they can still get their educational services. So sometimes it might be working with them for their accommodations to, okay, this screen magnifier will work for you or
Okay.
different.
Okay.
Yeah. Just making sure that their needs can be met in the regular classes.
Um and then the payment to Norris School District for the two special ed students. Um is this done, how often do we make, it says it covers 60 days?
Right, so it depends on the length of the program, so this one I think was was just for the 60-day, but then there's a tuition worksheet that you figure out the daily rate for, so there will be potentially additional billings for that.
So how is, how do we fund that? I mean, is that, is that just?
We budget it within our special ed budget for, it's really like outside service categories, so that would include like CISA services, CISA does some things, or we have the Norris School, or the Genesee Lakes, so it's programs that students, special ed are going to upgrade the district, so.
Okay.
And for regular, for district resident students, once we surpass, is it $35,000 a year? $30,000 a year, then we get reimbursed from the state, it's considered high cost special education need.
Okay.
And so then we get a 90% reimbursement, assuming they have enough money there to fund it at 90%. Yeah, so but it's much higher than the 27%, but you have to reach that threshold.
Sure.
If the student happens to be open enrolled to us, then we bill back to the resident school district
Got it.
any amount above the $12,000 open enrollment amount that we receive.
Okay.
So it's, there is some um, I don't want to call it income, but there's, there's an offsetting of those costs. Going to Norris, going to Genesee Lake, and sometimes the transportation costs more than the tuition. But like for us, if someone gets to Genesee Lake, it probably runs us 100, it's 120,000 a year roughly. And to send a kid to a place like Norris with the transportation, we end up costing like 60,000 to 90,000 a year.
And is that, that's the parent's choice of?
No, no, it's, it's an IEP team decision.
Okay.
So it's, parents are included on the team, but it's not, it's, it's not like a parent could say, well, I want, I didn't go here.
Okay.
So the funding sources could either be local, fake, federal IDA funds, or maybe from another district if it's a non-resident, we can claim that back. So what we try to do, work closely with with the special ed department to figure out what costs can be captured through state aids, because only certain costs are eligible there.
Sure.
And if they're not eligible there, then we'll look at the federal area, so we try to maximize them first, and then we go for local last, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do everything we can to service our students here within the district.
Sure.
That's when we have programs, such as related investments like the the ACE program and
Yep.
some of those other SOFOs, those type of programs, but um so we see a lot of success with that. But we can't always, it doesn't always mean to me.
Okay. That was it for me.
Other questions, anyone else? Okay, it's a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of March 30th, 2020, check numbers 139423 to 139616. Wire transfers 669 to 672, ACH check numbers 249 to 273. Debt service wire transfers 688 to 691, and voided check number 138357, 139233, 139239, 139243, 139343, and 139350. In the combined amount of 4,566,226 dollars and 56 cents as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of March 30th, 2020, checks numbered 139433 to 139616, wire transfer 669 to 672, 266, oh, 669 to 672. ACH check numbers 249 to 273, debt service wire transfer 688 to 691, voided check numbers 138357, 139233, 139239, 139243, 139343, and 139350. The combined amount of 4,566,226 dollars and 56 cents as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Deggler?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes. Motion carried. Um approval of support staff professional leave related to COVID-19.
Bill, do you want to speak to this one or?
Um yeah, this is uh, what we're asking the board to do is is approve the creation of a, it's really kind of an account code for hourly staff to identify at the time which is COVID-19 as we're going through this process. And we, we wanted to create that just to be able to track that time a little separately than actual work hours, just in case there's some reimbursement or just to have that data for a variety of purposes. And because we don't currently have that, our handbook is a pay code for our support staff, it really would require school board approval. So it's to make our employees whole relative to the hourly pay.
And this was coming after one of the webinars from the legal recommendations, so conceptually, it's nothing different than what we had, you know, discussed previously, it just make sure that we're covering legal.
Any questions other than that? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the support staff professional leave related to COVID-19 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move to second to approve the support staff professional leave related to COVID-19 as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Deggler?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Motion carried. Recommendation to district administrator personnel. Oh wait, I skipped over something, or discussion items, referendum update.
Oh, and I apologize, students did, um, as we can put it in the announcements, because I didn't list it on the agenda. Um and now we had touched base, was there something that you did want to share during the announcements portion?
Um just kind of the fact, um, just kind of from a student's perspective of, like, I've been talking to a lot of kids. And a lot of them are disappointed about like sports and stuff, um prom. Um we also are liking the online learning, so we don't think it's bad. It was definitely nervous and weird, but I've talked to a lot of kids and they've seemed to really like it.
Yeah, and overall, a lot of people understand the situation as well, too. So it's just kind of weird what we're all going through, but we're getting there.
Yeah. Um as far as the referendum and the referendum communication plans, I'm going to be perfectly honest, that it's kind of taken a backseat, you probably, I mean, we have set out a, many of our meetings were canceled. Um we also felt it would be in poor taste to push out videos related to the referendum while we're trying to communicate on the other plans and circumstances. We have um gone ahead and pushed out just a reminder to vote and, you know, you can do early voting on the um absentee ballot. So really, that's where we're at, we did cancel the um open house, or well, we didn't have to, the governor did, but um yeah, so. That's where we're at, any questions or thoughts related to the planning?
It mentioned on the um, in there that you had to place some signs in different places?
Uh we have the, like, there are big posters out there, just the informational posters.
Okay.
Because we can't do a, the, the district can't do an advocacy yes or no either way, so we do have um those large posters, there are a number of establishments that provide information about the referendum.
What if we printed up a bunch of um flyers, just a split eight and a half by 11 size of that? And stuck it in with the lunches um that we're distributing?
We do have the, we have the media connection that's going to be going out.
Okay.
And um, yeah, we could stuff in the, we have a lunch feature.
Yeah.
And we can stuff those reminders in with the the meals or the lunches.
Um yeah, just was trying to think of where can we have people?
Yeah, I'll talk to Kathy and she may already have those lined up, because I know that was something we talked about, but I'll, I'll think of it, but if we did print those lunch pictures.
Or even if there was some kind of a sandwich board sign going through the pickup lanes or something like that, just that people could, just that visual reminder for people. Um and also to request their absentee ballot, you know, so that they can vote.
Yeah. And I think I will still go ahead, we're just over a week away, I, I plan to still go ahead and put out the little video reminder.
Good.
Um as we read in, so I think we'll, as we get through this week, things will settle down, and then pick them up and remind you over the weekend or on Monday next week.
Yeah. People are absentee voting, so they're voting as we speak, you know, like, they're, they're already voting, so.
I did.
Um yeah, I'm filling out my absentee ballot tonight, so.
Yeah, and you can go, anyone in the public, you can go and do that early in-person voting as well.
Correct.
There's, I've never, I, that's what I always, well, not always, but most of the time I just go and do that.
Right.
That I can, there's never a line.
Yep. It's just that a lot of people I think are hesitant to, or are trying to minimize their numbers of trips out and stuff, though, I think more absentee voting is happening this year.
Yeah. Any other questions related to that or? Alright, um definitely not how we planned the last few weeks, uh, we mentioned it.
I know.
In that regard. Hey.
Alright, now recommendation, just want to show your personal.
You know, Jason, if there is, if there's some like social media graphics or things like that, that maybe you're hesitant to push out through the pool stuff, if you provided it with for to the school board members, I know I'd be happy to put it on my Facebook page and just, you know, invite people to ask questions if they have questions and so.
Okay, um yeah, I'll let Katie know, and on our website, we have the, you know, the vote and those information pages. I, I think the positive is we did a really good job getting information out early.
Yes, I agree.
And so a lot of the questions, initially, we had a lot of questions and
Yep.
um comments, and then since then, we haven't had any on the social media posts, we've been pushing that.
Okay.
And that website is still live, I'll show you when we go to the webpage for the COVID update component, the announcements, and I mean, that link's still there, so we just haven't had a lot of conversation on it.
Okay.
So I, I think that was positive, because we were out early, hopefully, a lot of those questions were answered.
Yeah, hopefully.
Um how this situation would impact people either way, I, I have no, no idea.
Right, yeah.
Uh we have a couple of retirements that did um come in. Cheryl Michaelson, who served as a physical education teacher over at the high school, who has been with us for 22 years. Will be retiring at the end of the year. And then Renee Maves, who serves as the administrative assistant or school secretary at Jackson, um will be retiring at the end of the year, she's been with us for 26 years. So I want to give both of them a huge thanks for all their years of service onto the school. And then we also have the resignation of um Emily Chisholm, um the high school girls' assistant basketball coach. Um she won't be joining us next year. I have the personnel.
Any questions for? Otherwise, looking for motion to approve.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for March 30th, 2020 as presented.
Is there a second? So move to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for March 30th, 2020 as presented, roll call vote, please.
Uh Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Deggler?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Motion carried. Who gives?
I have one school gift to present this evening, the Westside Elementary PTA has donated $200 to the Elton and $44 in sixty-eight cents for the purchase of the, of a bench.
What's the bench for?
Two.
I mean. Yeah, it's for the Elton or like?
No, it's a cheap bench.
We like cheap ones.
It was discounted.
It was the guy from Wayfair. I, I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay.
Well, we think.
Yes, thank you.
Um motion to approve?
I'll make motion, accept the generous gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the generous gifts to the Westside PTA as presented, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Deggler?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Uh second reading of revised policies. Mr. Tedman.
Hey, we have a number of the rules and um one policy being proposed to delete, the post discussion, those items were incorporated into the policies, and I have not had any other discussion or recommendations from the last board. So the first one is the rule 460 related to the tiebreaking procedure for the academic excellence and technical excellence scholarships. Um any questions or further comment related to this policy? We had the 460.1 tiebreaking procedure on to determine the class of valedictorian. Um one question, I guess, point of where I'd like to have clear on these, because we are striking, you know, when it's starting, and because these would, with approval today take effect, I, there may have been some confusion as to when the tiebreaking procedures would take effect. I'm working under the assumption that the board, as soon as the policies are approved, would um like those to be effective.
Immediately.
Immediately. Is that correct, or there any misunderstanding? If, if there's a different desire, then I think we need to change the language and add effective, starting with the certain class, whatever that effective date is, I don't see any.
I thought in the one meeting, though, you said it had to start next year.
Not, yes, wouldn't want to start next year. The, anything related to the academic excellence, because that determination is already passed, so if I go through this scholarship, the valedictorian would not have to start, make sure the academic excellence, because that selection is already made due to the state timeline. We're already past the collection for the academic excellence scholarship. And the tech, technical. So it doesn't have to start next year, it can be effective immediately, but this policy
It would not.
becomes effective after that selection is already made. Valedictorian is not selected until the end of the year.
I'm a, I'm a valedictorian uh tiebreaker, hopefully, we don't have to exercise that, but with the 12 trimesters, what's the impact of our current system going to have on that? Hopefully, we don't have to play that card, but might that cause some type of?
Yeah, was class been in the trimester system that long?
Yes.
They have, okay.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if, if there is a, a tie this year with 12 trimesters, this is the start of the 12th trimester, and the I don't know, grading of the 12th trimester for determination, uh I don't know, we're, we're all moved to this, should we consider something on that?
Um, actually, I'm.
I think he's saying because of the.
Virtual learning, distance learning, all the.
Right.
So hopefully, there's not, hopefully, there's not a tie and it wouldn't matter, but if there is, it could be.
Yeah, we've been looking at how different institutions are implementing this, and universities kind of moved to this sooner than the K-12, so we're, what we're seeing is different approaches all across the board, we're seeing um some institutions will throw the grades out altogether and have put in a, just a pass and a, most of them don't even put in a fail, they'll put in like a pass or an incomplete. Or we saw one of us passing with distinction, and then they gave everybody they got a P at 3.0, a passing with distinction, a 4.0, and otherwise it was incomplete. Um our feeling is, from the team, we'd like to keep the grades in, in check, but then we'd like to, meaning that the students can still earn their grades like they normally earn their grades, but would also like to offer the option of a student being able to take the course as a pass or an incomplete. Um meaning that that way they could keep themselves held harmless, have their GPA locked in. Our districts have just said there's not going to be grades in that last trimester, it's going to be pass, fail, and it won't impact GPA at all. Um our feeling is, keep the grades in, keep the GPAs in, but to protect kids that may not have access to the equity issue, the, the whole harmless would be, you can choose to take the courses as a pass only if you love it, that have no impact on GPA. So that way our kids going for valedictorian aren't negatively impacted um in any way they perform. And it wouldn't give anybody an advantage to climb on their GPA, because um if you're just taking courses as a pass, then you wouldn't be able to um improve your GPA, if that makes sense.
Do they get to decide at the end of the?
We, we felt like doing it under the middle school model, uh which is, when a, a student takes a course in middle school and they're taking it for high school credit, the policy that the school that should put in place is that the student can take the class, and then at the end of the course, determine whether they wanted to go on with the pass or fail, or the letter grade is there.
And then we have the parent sign off on that, and then they can't change it. Because once they go into high school, they're remembering our policy expectation. Are we doing the same thing with this then? Because sometimes we've got 18-year-olds now, they just sign off on it for themselves, to their parents?
Well, the.
We have a, because we had a policy with that for the middle school, and the conversation of, what if they want to go back and change their mind? Obviously, with seniors, you can't do that.
Right, they would have to just sign on how they wanted to do it as the, the pass or the fail. And that's what we did with the, the middle school, but um, yeah, we felt that would be the approach that would be the most equitable, it may be a blend of that, it wouldn't, you know.
So you're saying that some students would be adding to their GPA and some students wouldn't?
They could, they could elect to, you know, they could see what the grade was and then choose whether to have the letter grade on the transcript or have the P on the transcript. In colleges and higher ed institutes, there are going to be lots of different more influences.
Promises, right.
I, I like it, I think it gives the kids the option, I mean, you're going to work. I mean, you're going to work hard and maybe you chose not to work hard at the end and it's going to go for your P. I like the fact it gives them the option. It's consistent with the middle school.
How will, how will universities look at a student's transcript in terms of that passer?
Yeah, what we're hearing from them is that they're.
They're just going to kind of ignore it.
They pointed to institutions like MIT and Harvard, many of them that they've gotten letter grades off. Yeah, we're not, you know, a lot of the universities are taking the lead on just dumping the letter grade for this part of the grading period anyway.
Okay.
So they've indicated and cued that yes, from this is different circumstances, it's not going to play into. If a kid has, kid has a bunch of keys, there's going to be entire schools that that's all they can.
Yeah.
Is an indication that they passed their credit.
Okay.
May I allow to ask questions?
Technically, no. But that's up to the board.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused, um, of course as a parent. And I have a senior at a high school. So if you chose a pass, fail, or grade, that's your option. Is how you guys are making it sound, if I understand everything correctly. How would that have an impact on the laude? Because the laude system is what you guys are saying is the way to go. So now I turn around and I end up pass, fail. And maybe I only got a C in that class. And how would that have an impact on the laude system compared to an A in that class compared to a C in a pass, fail?
So you, you, you under, you know how the laude system works? Where they earn the honor point. And then at the end of their career, it's multiplied by their cumulative GPA.
Understand.
Yeah.
So in my example, let's say a C is a pass or fail. And you said, okay, this is a laude class. I'm going to take this, I'm going to take the pass, fail instead of the C. Because I didn't bust my butt like I should have and I did not get that A. So now I'm going to take the C because it's pass, fail. So how does that multiply in the laude system? Because an A would have been multiplied by your laude point. Is a pass, fail equivalent to an A then?
No, it's locked in whatever their GPA is prior to that is what would be locked in.
It's just the idea that you pick, you now often.
So if you're a straight A student, you decided you wanted to take off easy. And you just wanted to pass, fail.
If the student had a 4.0, they could select, I'm going to just do a pass, fail on all of them and have their 4.0.
And then your 4.0 would be multiplied times the laude points. Correct.
So they're held harmless. What we don't want to have happen is a student who hypothetically has a 4.0 because of the format, because of the, the change. Obviously, they've demonstrated over the last 11 trimesters that they know how to excel and do well in that format. Now the rules of the game are all changed, with the world flipped upside down. Um, we don't want them to be penalized for all that right work because they're in a different system or a different format. It's new for our teachers, it's new for our students. So we want those students to be able to lock that in.
They can lock it in and decide to be lazy the last semester.
They could. They could also decide, you know what, I met all my graduation requirements. Although that's where, you know, they may still have honor point or laude point during classes that they want to pursue and take. We also have requests from families and parents that hey, my kid was in, you know, a number of autos classes now and is doing a workday and he has all his graduation requirements fulfilled and he just be done. Yeah, you don't need to take the, the course. So it's really just trying to set up a hold harmless because we don't want a situation where the kids are dealing with the added stress. The, you know, their parents might have lost their jobs. There's a whole lot of things going on. But we also don't want to penalize the kid who's like, hey, I'm busting my hump. I earned those As, I want those on my transcript. So it's, is it perfect? No, could you have some kids kind of blow it off? You could. It's part of the reason why, you know, the board's good. We also don't necessarily want to push that out and advertise that.
Right.
Right away, but um, we want to plan it as an insurance policy on that backend to make sure that nobody's penalized. Yet, we also feel, I don't see a scenario where you might have somebody and I don't know, I, I don't really see scenarios where it's going to go into play because our valedictorians typically have 4.0s. Were there, so it's really, there's then the option that they had it locked in and they don't have to have that stress. Could someone just say, well, I'm done, I'm not going to have them to lock my GPA? Well, they could. But I know those kids going for the valedictorian are still happy. They're still taking those courses and they typically don't have that type of demeanor or mindset to just stop. So this is more for our kids to, Voltaire's lost a job, they're struggling, they're out of working out.
Oh, it's very tough up there.
Yeah. It's trying to keep, keep that.
Uncharted territory. I mean, none of us have ever, never anticipated this ever happening. So I mean.
It's a very.
Never.
That's, we asked Adam, which is our own team in the debate. That's why when we came around to, we felt that procedure that we have in place for the middle school. And the reason why we did that is we wanted to encourage middle school students to push themselves. Yet not because, hey, I took geometry or algebra two in eighth grade. We didn't want them to be penalized because they got an A minus. And that seems a little bizarre, but you get one A minus. You may not have the opportunity to be valedictorian.
Nope.
Yeah. All things being. So that's, that's why we put that into place. Most kids, my, my kid got an MIS in algebra two in eighth grade. Yeah, and you got a B. I'm like, yeah, absolutely, put that on the transcript. But not everybody fills that way. So um, that's why we gave that option.
Yep. So when will that be communicated to the students then?
Uh, I think, I mean, um, we haven't finalized that. I, I think on one hand, you, you can't wait till the last second to communicate it either because the whole point of it would alleviate the stress.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So I, I really think that we want to go through this of the, the board meeting and then, you know, if, if people are good with that, then, you know, technically, we, I think we can just do an administrative or decision on that. You don't have to go back and rewrite policy, which would. But I think we could get that communicated out. And be proactive like that. Thoughts or is there any, does, does that answer the question, DJ? Does that?
It, it does answer the question. That's what I kind of thought that you were going, but I guess it didn't. I understand what you're saying with stress, I get all of that. But I don't know, I understand exactly what you're saying.
It could.
I just want to make sure I understand it.
I think the student that could be disappointed is someone who's sitting there wanting to be valedictorian and with like a 3.97 GPA and they're hoping that perhaps the person ahead of them falters in a class. Sorry, nobody ever hopes that, but that's the only way and that you're going to get straight As and be able to, to pass.
Right.
Because the other way, the way this would be set up, it just freezes it where it's at. And a lot of schools are doing that. They're just locking in.
Yeah.
Whatever your GPA is after 11 trimesters and they don't want it to not count.
Right.
Thank you so much for that.
Yeah.
But, but the question presses, is this going to be the policy for this year?
As legally as it's set up and currently stated, this would be in place prior to the selection of the valedictorian. So if we don't want it to be effective, we need to have language to say condensing with the different.
The only thing we're changing on here though is the superscore and then taking out the third tiebreaker.
And taking out the PSAT.
Yeah. We've never actually.
Second, third.
Right.
It's a tiebreaker.
Right.
Which I, yeah, I don't know if you've gotten to the third tiebreaker.
I mean, I know the other policy has more changes in it, but that one doesn't start until next year. Right, right. That's the state money. Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, really the only difference on this, yeah, the only change is that we indicate without superscore. And drop the PSAT, we would just have co-palder.
Yeah, because we decided not everyone's, as we tried to say.
Is everyone all right with that still? Okay, and everyone understands it will be affected by the selection.
This one will, this, right.
Yeah.
Well, they all are effective immediately, it's just that the other one won't get used until next year.
Because it already happened. Right, and then the 511 rule, which um, should have some minor updates on the language, changing pronouns. And identifying the positions would be in the complete procedure. And then deleting the professional policies. Policy because there is no longer legal. This part being here.
Right.
That's it.
No questions? No, just looking for motion.
I move to approve revised policies for 460 rule, tie breaking procedure to determine academic excellence scholarship. For 60.1 rule, tie breaking procedure to determine class valedictorian. And 511 rule, employee discrimination point procedure. And to delete policy 530, professional policies as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moving second to approve revised policies for 460 rule, tie breaking procedure to determine academic excellence scholarship. Rule, tie breaking procedure to determine class valedictorian. And 511 rule, employee discrimination point procedure. And to delete policy 530, professional policies and approve 930. Roll call both.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Deggner?
Yes.
Ms. Gaochak?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Motion carrying announcements.
All right, um. Yeah, it seems there's been a lot that's happened since our last legislature retreat, which we had the school board at. Um, but some good news. Gateway and the Alternative High School, we co-wrote a grant with Gateway um, for the Career and College Academy, which will be launched next year. And it was highly competitive in the state and we were awarded that grant in combination with Gateway. Gateway's the lead on it, but it's to basically support our Career and College Academy program. Uh, at the Alternative High Schools. So they will have additional staffing. I believe it may even pay for some of the courses and provide extra support. So Gateway will see the bulk of that, but our students will benefit from the supports. Um, so it will be Gateway's helping added, but again, added to support our students that are paid in that.
Is that all for grades then or is it just the juniors and seniors?
No, that'd be all for.
All for grades.
Yeah. So I want to show on our coalition homepage. Again, anyone who happens to watch this video later, if you want information on the referendum, it's located right there. Um, I really want to give a big thanks to Jody Gottman and Katie Hoffman. They, Jody in particular, put this page together ahead of time as soon as we saw this coming down the forefront. So all of our main district-wide communication will be located on the page. There's. Okay, so I guess I don't need to. A couple areas that I want to highlight and I got contacted by someone in the media today. Nate was in our small cities or small malls. Uh, the school district, like in our case, were if not the largest employer, I think the county might be a large employer, but really in the community, believe were the largest employer. And that's not uncommon. So um, because of that, the staff and the personnel and the organizational structure that we have, we have the capacity to help in a lot of areas. And so if we have families that are out there or people who know our families who have a need, we've asked them and directed them to come to this website, now this link. They can um, select that and um, fill in the simple information. And then they um, input, basically it's kind of open in it at the end, outside of the meal service. So this is for any need outside of that. We've had some people indicate childcare, health, or some other areas. This page, John Anzalone is working with our caseworkers, community-based organizations to coordinate support services to make sure if things get difficult for our families that those health and sports are there, that we can help in that effort. We also have a volunteer sheet. We've got over 60 individuals and combination of individuals and families that have signed up to volunteer in a number of different ways. And I hope they're patient because the requests to volunteer are greater than what our need identification is. Right now, our school staff has been able to handle most of the needs and us wanting to keep them busy and working. But um, we, we have that pool of volunteers there that run the background check right away. And so we're coordinating people on that.
Wonderful problem to have.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's great and I want to give a huge thanks to the community. And then the third piece that, that we're helping with is um, we have the, the meal search, which is available to all students and any adults in need. The education foundation approved allocating what was um, they had set aside $6,000 for like class, classroom, what we call the express grants. Um, they um, agreed with school counseling the way it is to shift those monies over to support families who are in need in particular by covering the adult meal costs. Because the school, we get reimbursed through the federal food program for each student who participates in the meal. But adults, anyone over 18, um, we have to cover the cost of that meal. So that money is set aside for that and then we've also been receiving donations. I think that money will, um, depending on what we identify that final cost of our meal, but we may go through that pretty quick because we had um, today, actually, the first report on Facebook was 151 adult meals and 671 child meals. But you have to multiply that by two because they've received a breakfast and a lunch. So it was 302 adult meals and was that 1,342 child meals that were distributed today? Between the breakfast and lunch. So it was quite a um, large endeavor. Um, very pleased with the, the organization, the structure to put out 1,342 meals on the first day. And from the accounts that I've heard, we, what I saw, I drove around, remember different stops, there weren't lines. People weren't waiting, the procedure was done in a very safe manner. So um, as safe as we, you know, can be. So um, we were very pleased with that. Then I included in the board notes, I've gotten a handful of emails from people. I've been very happy with, you know, the teachers' attitudes and the way they've approached the digital online learning. And the students and the parents, it's been um, great to see. I think a lot of excitement, it's exciting to get back engaged and um, teachers completely learning different delivery models and we're ready to approach it in a very short timeframe. And I, and just like anything else, it's, it's going to be an adventure the last few weeks. It's um, we're going to have to, we'll learn, we'll keep learning, we'll keep adjusting and we'll tweak as we go. That's all I have to be known. Let's see, Ms. Deggner, Ms. Gaochak, anything else you want to add? I think you've kind of covered it, but anything else?
Um, nope, I'm good.
All right.
I have a quick question. Um, sorry to bring it up again, but I just thought about it. For the pass or fail thing, you guys never clearly said it, but would they get a laude point if they chose the pass route?
Yeah, so the, the honor points, so when you take a class that is a college level equivalent class, um, and that doesn't mean four year, it could be a technical college level and a D course, any dual credit. That's the better word to use. Of course, it earns an honor point. And the way you get your laude points is at the end of your um, high school career, you multiply your cumulative GPA by the number of honor points you've earned over your 12. you multiply your cumulative GPA by the number of honor points you've earned over your 12 trimesters. So it has no impact on you earning an honor point. What it does is it gives you flexibility on your GPA. If the grade you earned in that class would hurt your GPA, you could opt to take a pass and it wouldn't have any bearing on your GPA. If the grade you earned could help your GPA, you could choose to take the grade and potentially impact your cumulative GPA. At this point in your high school career though, whatever you do isn't going to have a significant impact on your GPA.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally understand. I was just making sure, double checking, like if, like someone, in case one of my friends asked me or something, in case.
We'll put that out, yeah, so your, all your honor point varying classes, which impact your laudity points, still count. They still will earn the honor, whether you choose pass or fail.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
These kids are already students, they are already in the classes, so it's not like you've got a swarm of them now that are all like, we're all taking classes with laudity points, you know, because, yeah, the try's already started. Yeah. Yeah.
I think what we will see with seniors, especially if they're not in that honor point varying type course and they don't need the course to graduate, we may see more requests just to drop those courses, which I'm okay with in the circumstance.
But it won't be a swing.
Help out around the house.
Turn the other way.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Also move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
All right, I will, Ms. Digger?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ray?
Yes.